Okay, Commission Meeting for June 24th will come to meeting to order. City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Gault?
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Right here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kayler?
Present. Commissioner Abraham is going to do our invocation tonight, and Commissioner Gault, would you be the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
My Father was right in heaven, we thank you so much for today. We pray that on days such as this that we take full advantage of opportunities to show your character. Help us to understand that it's not about what we do for ourselves, but it's what we do for other people. Help us keep that in mind when we make decisions from this bench. These things we ask in issue's name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City Manager, are there any additions or deletions?
There are. We ask the Commission to delete Item 7F from the agenda tonight, please.
Thank you. We have a presentation tonight. Michael and Victoria Terror are here to give us an update on the Lower Town Arts and Music Festival. Michael? Victoria, coming up.
Where's your hat? What? Where's your hat? You don't wear hats in the house. You know better than that. So, thank you, guys. We're here as the festival is closing down. We're still doing a lot of math and writing thank yous. But first off, we want to tell you what happened and thank you straight away.
Nobody was majorly hurt. No.
That's good.
Yeah, that's always good.
It is because we took a big risk this year in not being open on Sunday. And so we were open Friday and Saturday, but as it turned out, all 16,000 people who came last year came this year as well, even though we didn't have...
Oh, we were pleased. We were very pleased.
What else? More orders. Taste of Paducah is almost twice as many people as it was last year, and many food vendors represented.
Everything went really well this year. You know, and into my second year as co-director, it was a lot easier. As much work, a lot easier, though. Wasn't as overwhelming as it was last year.
There were not as many things to build. What? We'd already built all that stuff. Fewer things to build.
Yeah, yeah, we're every year, you know, we get a little more infrastructure.
One of the things that made it work and makes it work every year is working with the city. So, a big thank you to you guys for making that possible.
Yes, thank you.
Your contribution of finances is super important, but also working with the public works folks, working with the Parks Department, working with all of the media outlets that we've worked with, including Pam Spencer and coming out of this building. It all worked beautifully and effortlessly, and all the support that you guys give us is huge.
Yeah, in that age-old cliche, we definitely feel the love, you know, because Michael and I put a lot into this festival, and we work on the festival all year round. And when it comes time, those couple of months beforehand, every city person that we have to deal with, the Parks and Rec and the people from the city, they love the festival, and we can tell. And they're so helpful to us, and we really appreciate that.
So, would you like to...
I would.
Okay. A little thing made by a local artist?
Rachel Beal made this, which she does every year.
Oh, nice. Thank you. We'll put it in the office.
No, 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 thank you.
All right.
You did this out here.
So, that's it. Any questions?
You guys do a great job every year, and we're lucky to have you guys in leadership.
You know, Michael and Victoria, the only two people I know who not only burned the candle at both ends, somehow they've managed to hollow out the middle of the candle, and they got this flame in the middle. So, they got three flames on this candle burning away. Thank you, guys.
Oh, thanks.
Y'all are a great team. Thank you very much.
And you had great weather this year?
Yes.
Was the weather...
I don't know, Thursday night was a little hairy. Thursday night, Michael and I were out there. Michael and I and Merle were out there because we had that squall come in, and it was pretty touch and go with some of the booths that weren't all set up yet.
We did do some tent chasing.
We did.
I've got my junior tent wrangler's badge.
And more concrete blocks.
That's right, more concrete. Perfect.
Yeah, I don't know, we had more volunteers this year than we had last year, and our volunteer appreciation party that we had, we had more attendees. It was really, really fun.
Good.
Yeah.
So, thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Respect.
Before we get started with the meeting, I'd just like to read a declaration that I signed while I was in Africa with the mayor of Lambaranay. "We, the mayors of Lambaranay-Gobon and Paducah, Kentucky, USA, having been empowered by the confidence of our citizens to respond to the profound aspirations of our people, cognizance that world civilization is founded on the idea of freedom, considering that human history must be pursued on the path toward prosperity and freedom, and that this world can only be humane within the context of individual and collective freedoms, on this day solemnly declare our wish to foster fruitful cultural, social, and economic exchanges on behalf of our people, to maintain permanent contacts between our cities, encourage and support fraternal relations among nations in our effort to enable the success of this noble enterprise, work toward mutual respect, friendship, and understanding between the peoples of Lambaranay and Paducah, whereof we, Roger, Valore, Aye Ma Benoit, Mayor of the City of Lambaranay, and Gail Kayler, Mayor of the City of Paducah, having affixed our signatures and seals of our city." So, it was a good trip, and it was a great cultural experience, a good cultural exchange, and we hope to have more of a cultural exchange with them through the college and some of the ideas that the University of Kentucky has to work with that city. So, Commissioner Abraham, you want to do the minutes, please?
I move that the reading of the minutes for June 10th, 2014, City Commission Meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Comis-- oh, do this. "Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Melody LaCoron to the Paducah-McCracken County Senior Citizens Board to replace Sedona Withrow Gray, whose term has expired. This term shall expire June 30th, 2017. And whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Sherilyn Holland Cooper and J.M. Collins to the Paducah-McCracken County Senior Citizens Board. This term shall expire June 30th, 2017."
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action, Mayor Kayler, in appointing Melody LaCoron and reappointing Sherilyn Holland Cooper and J. Collins as members of the Paducah-McCracken County Senior Citizens Board.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Onto motions. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay, June 24th, 2014, I move the following documents, bids and proposals to be received and filed. Documents: Certificate of Liability Insurance for Hayden Construction Company, right-of-way bond for SC Development LLC, deed of conveyance for 3,400 Oliver Church Road for the Oliver Church Road Improvement Project, quitclaim deeds for the closing of a portion of Ridgewood Street between Topeka Avenue and Olympia Avenue, Charles and Linda Hayden, David and Christie Stuber, Ron and Shirley Hagan and Hickton Development Incorporated. Commissioners' deeds: 433, 435 North Fourth Street, 1115 North 12th, and 151 Clement Street. Contracts and agreements: Change Order Number 1 with ANK Construction for the TeleTech Call Center Project; B Agreement with Youngblood Excavating and Contracting LLC for Noble Park Lake Bank Stabilization Project; Official Statement for the 2010 Build America Bond, GOB, as refinanced in May 2014, Series 2014A; Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights and Balance Sheets for May and June of 2014; okay, bids for Engineering Public Works Department, Fire Station Number 1, Generator Project, Nichols Electric Company LLC, and Story Electric Service Incorporated; Proposals for Planning Department, 433 through 435 North Fourth Street, Martin and Crystal Trout, ETC Development LLC.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Discussion on the motions. Steve, are you going to talk to us about this? All right.
If I could, I'd like to give a brief overview of what's happened to date. Good evening. The property at 433, 435 North Fourth Street was acquired by the City of Paducah on February 21st of 2014 at the Master Commissioner's sale. According to city records, the two-story brick structure was built around 1867 and has approximately 3,744 square feet of living space. Originally used as a four-unit rental house, the property has most recently been converted into eight efficiency apartments and stands in dire need of repair. Shortly after acquisition, staff received demolition approval from HARC to raise the structure should approve in the best interest of the community to do so. Planning staff published a request for proposals for this property in the Paducah Sun Edition on June 8th, 2014, requesting interested parties to submit bids. Mr. Chadbier, ETC Development LLC submitted a bid offering $1,000 for the property. He proposes to completely renovate the existing structure and create four upscale affordable one-bedroom apartments of approximately 900 square feet per unit. His projected investment is $275,000, and a letter of financial support from the Paducah Bank was included in his proposal. Martin and Crystal Trout submitted an offer to purchase the property for $1 and proposed to demolish the existing structure. Their proposal includes the construction of a 40-by-40 general store and market that includes the possible acquisition of the adjacent lot at 427 North Fourth Street. Their projected investment is $254,000, and a letter of financial support from the Paducah Bank was included in their proposal. Both bidders have presented complete and thorough proposals for the development of the property. Martin and Crystal Trout have had a booth at the downtown farmer's market for the last 10 years, and their vision is to construct a new building to house a general store and market. ETC Development's proposal has the added element of proposing to save an historic structure within the H2 historic residential zone. The structure at 433, 435 North Fourth Street has been standing since 1867 and lies within a historic neighborhood zone designated as the H2 Zone. As stated in Chapter 126 of the zoning ordinance, the purpose of the H2 Zone is to encourage the development, redevelopment, and preservation of the city's historic neighborhood areas. ETC Development's proposal is aimed at preserving the historical integrity of the building as evidenced by the intention to re-brick the original arched windows which had been obscured by previous renovations. ETC Development Plan proposes to restore the building according to the Secretary of Interior Standards for historic rehabilitation in full compliance with design guidelines of the Historical and Architecture View Commission as they apply to the H2 Zone. Given the existing shortage of affordable rental units in the downtown and lower town neighborhood, converting this structure back to its original use as a fourplex rental house seems to be a viable plan. The Development Plan submitted by Martin and Crystal Trout is also a solid proposal which includes the documented community support for their vision of constructing an old-time general store and market in the downtown Lower Town District. Before construction could begin on the proposed 40-by-40 building, it would be necessary to receive HARC approval for the design, to acquire the adjacent property at 427 North Fourth Street, and to raise the existing structure. City Commission action tonight would designate 433, 435 North Fourth Street as surplus property owned by the City of Paducah and authorize the transfer of the property to one of the aforementioned bidders. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, and I think there's some property owners here or bidders here if you have any questions of them also.
Before, I mean, these are the proposals. Now, they have to go to HARC before they can do anything?
Yes, Ms. Trout has actually been one time. They requested some changes, went back, and did not have a quorum. Both property owners, before any new construction happens, have to receive approval from HARC for all exterior changes or new construction within that zone.
But the proposals are as they are. In other words, they can't be changed. The proposals cannot be changed, or can the proposals be changed?
As far as exterior modifications, I believe they can. If HARC requests something be changed to the exterior of one of these structures, that could happen, yes.
No, totally changed?
No.
Just me personally, I feel that it's important to keep the historic structure because, you know, we talked about that some while back about maybe tearing that structure down and just selling it as a lot. And I remember Mark Palmer's house when the Neighborhood Association sold it to the city, and it had no floor, and most of the roof was gone. And what a beautiful structure it is today. So, my thoughts were, if they'd made a proposal to do the general store in the existing building, but since the proposals have already been made, that cannot be changed.
That's correct.
Is that adjoining lot for sale?
Yes, it is. Yeah, the adjoining three lots actually are for sale, owned by Mr. Lindblad.
Did HARC-- and you said HARC has already approved the raising of the building?
Initially, when we first purchased it, we went before HARC in case we wanted to do so in the future. At that time, we had not gone out to bid and did not understand the actual interest within the property. So, yes, we did receive demolition approval early on in the process.
And why did we do that?
At that time, we thought the structure was beyond repair. We did not think we would have that type of supplemental that we actually ended up having.
So, now we think it is, could be repaired?
Yes, absolutely.
Based on a proposal that was submitted, in other words, we sort of gave the opportunity for someone or some peoples to submit a proposal to repair it. So, we were somewhat surprised by that. I think in retrospect, obviously, it was a thing to do.
Was there, with Mr. and Mrs. Trout, was there...
And they were here.
Was there a Plan B for you if this didn't work out and you didn't get that spot? Is there another place? Because staff will definitely assist you all in finding a spot down there to do, if that's even a possibility, I'm asking. Okay, all right.
Well, is it the location or the money?
Second.
The amount of the investment or the location that's more important?
The location is very important because we have several of our customers that are from the Lower Town area and also are customers coming to see us downtown in the farmer's market. And the general consensus is they want us downtown. And once we're in, we can leave that home town and enter the street.
On the land next to it, you said there are three lots next to where that is for sale?
Yes, ma'am.
It's hard to have access off of such a big road with the inward corner, which has a large parking lot entrance and exit on Harrison, so that didn't have to involve the state route.
So, for those other lots, you can't have access off of Harrison?
I would approve the alley.
And that's not a possibility?
I would. Thank you. I would want the alley.
Typically, properties on state routes can have access off the state route. So, I'm not sure if, did the state tell you that?
It's very, it's very difficult to call it.
Okay.
It's a safe entrance and exit.
You know, obviously, US 60 coming into Paducah, we have access off of that route in a few places.
Same thing, same thing on other existing property that we try to purchase, it's possible to be accessed since that's such a, it's a traffic area that we're going to say, never just move.
More so than a street?
Well, I think you've got a curve there that comes up as well that factors into that.
It's a, it's a, yeah. So, it'd be a very short response time to recognize. First, we stopped at that sign on the street.
Any other comments? I mean, you know, we've got two great offers here.
I know, and that's what I'm thinking in my head.
How do we keep both of them?
That's exactly what I'm thinking in my head because it's very important. I know that Martin and Crystal have been just a staple down there, and I know that in downtown and Lower Town, people want to see you all succeed, and they want you as an anchor, if you will. And I understand the need to have the other as well and to restore the property. I get both, and if there's a way that we can have both, I don't want to be greedy, but as a community, we would certainly like to have both. And Steve, come on.
Yeah, well, we're in an unfortunate great situation here. You know, I want to congratulate both of them for submitting great proposals, you know, but that's where we're at right now. Certainly, depending upon your decision, all the resources in our department would work with either one of them to make their project work somewhere in Lower Town. We would certainly put those resources forth.
Are you open to looking at other locations, or is this just... I guess it may be...
We really have time to talk about it. Honestly, we thought we had another one, but it kind of broke our last heart. Nothing to see that, though, in a hurry. This was our second chance. So, just our personal feelings, we've been through so much. We're looking to make the life longer, but we're looking at this being our dream. I work at Eset, good, net layout. If this is a lifetime proposal, it's, so I didn't say that, you know, we don't want to look anymore at properties, but right now, if we do not, if this property, we would have to step down, step back and reevaluate it. What we can do, what we can't do.
Well, that's definitely understandable.
Generally, I don't want to see buildings torn down. I'd like to see them renovated as much as we can, but I really think what you are wanting to offer there will be very attractive. I mean, it'd be almost within eyesight of the new hotel, so it would add some, you know, kind of a really nice feature for that, bringing everybody back downtown.
I know, too, and I know that you are proposing, but, you know, our thoughts are, we want it to be the community store, you know, where people can just come and, we're going to have a deli in Bay Street, hopefully, and, you know, we want them to go out on the front porch and sit and eat their meal, you know, if they want, or just come and greet outside and just visit with their neighbors, you know, just to just have some place that they can come and, and plus, it's another location, as like you were saying, for people to come in, or have a bite to eat, get it to old times, you know, general store somewhere. They have a lot of nostalgic items that would be kind of a draw to make tourists, you know, during the show, it would be a very busy place, you know, for another added stop for tourists, very thoughtful.
And I do appreciate the fact, it looks like a lot of your neighbors really want that. I mean, we obviously want more housing downtown and Lower Town that are affordable apartments, but, you know, it's a really tough decision. It might just in a couple of days, we just got it, so.
Do you all want to think about it a while longer? Steve, what do you recommend?
As far as...
If they want, if everybody wants to think about it?
That would be obviously fine with me. I think, you know, Crystal, I've been working with her for some time. I've actually been pushing along the process because they've been so eager, so I'm under no time constraints. It was really, the property owner's the one that wanted me to move forward this quickly, so that would be up to you.
So, the way you have it, we can vote tonight on it? Are there any other comments people have, or...
I don't have any more comments.
So, do you all want to go ahead and vote tonight?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
So, do you want them to read both of them, or...
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you've got both motions.
Okay, you want me to read both motions?
You have to read one and vote on it, and then you'll have to read the second one and vote on it.
Okay, well, the first one I have is, "I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order accepting the bid for ETC development in the amount of $1,000 for purchase of the real property located at 433, 435 North Fourth Street and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed for saying be adopted."
Second.
Okay.
Okay, wait just a minute, read it one more time. I'm sorry.
This is to accept the municipal order. It's a, "I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order accepting the bid for ETC development in the amount of $1,000 for purchase of the real property located at 433, 435 North Fourth Street and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed for saying be adopted." That, that's the one, the first one.
Okay, you want me to call the roll?
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Abraham?
No.
Commissioner Gault?
No.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Mayor Kayler?
This really bothers me. I mean, I would love for Crystal, I'd love for them to have their wishes. I just hate to see another historic building torn down.
Right.
I really do. The Carriage House is going down right now, so I'll vote yes for it. All right.
Now, do I need to read the second one? "I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order accepting the proposal of Martin and Crystal Trout in the amount of $1,000 for purchase of the real property located at 433, 435 North Fourth Street and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed for saying be adopted."
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Hey, Commissioner Abraham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gault?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodes?
No.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Kayler?
I sure wished you had renovated the house and able to have made a lovely general store.
I don't get this.
We did actually request, we did, we thought this was a look inside, and when we got inside, we didn't see anything. We didn't look at that option.
We'll go on to Commissioner Abraham, please.
"I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application and all documents necessary through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for funds in the amount of $75,000 for the purchase, for the Paducah Police Department Emergency Generator Project be adopted."
Second.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I appreciate your opportunity to listen to this. We are applying or asking to apply to the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for a portion of this grant application. We have set aside a... We have set aside a hundred and five thousand, some change, that the city manager and Finance Director Perkins have worked to identify. Hopefully that match will encourage the Kentucky, Kentucky Office of Homeland Security to see that as our efforts going forward and that they will match that in the dollar amount specified, hopefully in amount of $75,000, so.
Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt, please.
"I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order approving the advertisement for bid and distribution of a preliminary official statement for the purchase of a city of Paducah, Kentucky taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2014B, Police and Firefighters Pension Plan, in the aggregate principal amount of approximately $4,230,000 be adopted."
Second.
Mayor and Commissioners, my comments cover this municipal order plus an ordinance that you'll be reading later on in the meeting. In 2005, the city of Paducah issued $6.1 million in taxable general obligation bonds to pay off the police and firefighter pension funds unfunded liability at that time. We are proposing to refinance those bonds and those bonds will be replaced by a bond sale that will take place on July the 9th and it'll also be a tax exempt bond issue. By refinancing, we hope to achieve a more favorable tax exempt rate through the year 2025. We anticipate that the proposed refinancing will produce an estimated net interest savings of over $200,000, hopefully more. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have this time regarding this, regarding this. And as a side note, since the year 2010, the Finance Department has spearheaded nearly $2 million in interest saving by refinancing over $16.5 million in bonded debt, so this is yet another one.
Very good. Good work, John. Any comments for John?
I have a question for John, if I might. John, you note on the memo that city is not responsible for future unfunded past service liability or any decisions by the pension board granting cost of living increases to the pensioners that are not covered. Has there been such a cost of living granted by the board since this bond issue originated?
The answer is yes. The answer is yes.
And how long?
Not by this board, but by the police and fire pension board.
Right, right.
Yes.
And how long's it been since there was an adjustment made to?
I'm talking off the top of my head here, 2006 or '07.
Seven years, something like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay, "I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order adopting the FYI 2014, 2015 Position and Pay Schedule for Full-Time Employees of the City of Paducah be adopted."
Second. Ms. Cindy?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Commission. We've got for your approval, the Position and Pay Schedule. Your packets that were sent out this weekend reflected the lion's share of the changes, which really are the annual wage adjustments on every single position across all of the sections. In FOP and IFF, that's 1%. In AFME, 1.75, and non-bargaining employees, 1.75. Also, you have a new position pay table today compared to the one this weekend. Some, a couple of specific adjustments were made, including catching up to you and adding the Deputy Chief Fire Operations, that was already approved in the budget ordinance. And then one movement of a, reducing by one, a labor in public, engineering public works maintenance and moving it over to engineering public works right-of-way maintenance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Cindy? City Clerk, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Ordinances, adoption, Commissioner Wilson, please.
"I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Annual Budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Adopting the City of Paducah Annual Budget for fiscal year July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government with $67,858,815 and summarized by fund as follows. General: $33,185,160. MAP: $1,639,200. Investment: $5,312,390. CDBG: $1,250,000. E911: $1,684,035. Court Awards: $25,750. Debt: $3,173,080. CIP: $7,664,250. Solid Waste: $4,912,565. Civic Center: $81,725. Rental: $134,920. Radio Depreciation: $126,940. Fleet: $545,905. Fleet Trust: $1,824,200. Self Insurance: $1,020,495. Health Insurance: $3,771,700. AEPF, PFPF, TRSTS: $1,506,500 for a total of $67,858,815.
Need a second.
Second.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
"I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to pay for the emergency repair, total reconstruction work to the number two pump located at flood wall station number two, 1416 North Sixth Street, and transfer funds in the amount of $134,673 from various accounts for payment. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The Finance Director is hereby authorized to pay Precision Machine Inc. in the amount of $134,673 for the emergency repair reconstruction of the number two pump located at flood wall station number two, 1416 North Sixth Street. Furthermore, the Finance Director shall transfer funds from the accounts listed below to the flood wall repair upkeep property plant account for payment authorized. $50,000 from the Commissioner contingency, $23,500 from administrative contingency, $61,173 from engineering public works, uh, operational account, $134,673 total funds to be transferred."
Second. Have you taught us about this last week?
Well, we, we've talked about it a little bit. Mayor, Commission, this is one of those unexpected, I guess, failures of your aging infrastructure. Again, we talked about working with COR to get the flood wall and its facilities rehabilitated and reconstructed to its original luster. As we work through that process, we're losing components. This is one of those components that got lost and it needed to be repaired. Those repairs have been made. We did this on a time and materials basis to restore this because the nature of this pump needs to be out and back in as quick as possible and this is the end result of that.
Okay, so, and the $134,000 is the total cost for it all?
Is the cost, is the total cost, yes, ma'am.
And I understand that USJSA for a $25,000 donation towards that?
Actually, there's seven pumps in this pump station. This is pump number two. The pump we're talking about with JSA is pump number seven.
Okay.
And it's, it has a similar problem. These pumps have, these pumps have dual purposes, whereas if we want to go through that, pump number two was an original pump that was put in with the flood wall in 1939. In 1957, when the treatment plant was built, the, this pump was cycled on and cycled off to pump the effluent from the treatment plant to the river. In 1998, number seven pump was added because in lieu of cycling a 200 pump, a 200 horsepower pump on and off all the time to, to take the effluent off the treatment plant, we put in a 100 horsepower pump with a variable frequency drive that would spin up faster as the water came in from the treatment plant and slow down. These pumps are directly adjacent to one another in the station. Pump number two failed after pump number seven failed. I'm working with JSA, or we're working with JSA to help us with the number seven pump that is dedicated to the effluent of the treatment plant. We were using this number two pump as the backup to number seven. Okay, now number seven, number two pump is only used to pump stormwater.
Okay. Well, we have a bill, another bill come through for number two?
Later on, later on, later on, and that'll be in this fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
Rick, you mentioned about, did I understand that we might be use this expenditure as part of our match to the flood wall? Did you say something about that?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, I did. In the past, since we've had the feasibility study done with the COR, anything that we spend that was identified in that feasibility study as needing replacement, I'm bringing that to their attention and saying, hey, we're not done here, but meanwhile, while we're working, we're losing components. As we spend money on those components, I want our monies that we spend to be recognized as match money for a future project, but that takes a lot of work with them because that takes an exception to policy that goes all the way to the Secretary of the Army.
Anything's ever simple?
Not when you're dealing with the federal government.
Carry on.
Okay, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt, please.
"I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Paducah-McCraken County Convention Investors Bureau for specific services. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah-McCraken County Convention Investors Bureau in the amount of $25,000 to be used for marketing and promoting events and venues related to the 2014 American Quilter Society Show. This contract shall expire June 30, 2014."
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
On to ordinances introduction, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay, gonna take a while. Tammy, you'll get it. "I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky authorizing the issuance of City of Paducah, Kentucky taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2014B, Police and Firefighters Pension Plan, in the aggregate principal total of $4,230,000 subject to a permitted adjustment for increasing or decreasing the size of said bonds by up to $425,000 for the purpose of refunding in advance of maturity a portion of the outstanding of the City of Paducah, Kentucky taxable general obligation bonds, Police and Firefighters Pension Plan, Series 2005, authorizing and approving engagement of the Finance Director and the Bond Council in connection with the issuance and sale of the bonds, approving the form of the bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing filings with the state, local debt officer, and Department for Local Government, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating a bond payment fund, maintaining heretofore established sinking fund, authorizing acceptance of the bid of the bond purchasers for the purchaser of the bonds, and repealing inconsistent ordinances. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The ordinance authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds designated as Series 2014B in the approximate principal amount of $4,230,000, the bonds, by the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the city. The bonds are to be issued for the purpose of refunding in advance of maturity a portion of the outstanding City of Paducah, Kentucky taxable general obligation bonds, Police and Firefighters Pension Plan, Series 2005, the prior bonds, the proceeds of which will be used to fund unfunded liabilities in the city's police and firefighters pension fund, the pension fund. Provisions are made in the ordinance for the payment of bonds and the security therefore, for the application of the proceeds of the bonds, for the establishment of the bond payment fund, for the maintenance of the previously established sinking fund, for the certain covenants of the city with respect to the bonds. The bonds to be sold at public competitive sale shall mature, will be subject to maturity sinking fund redemption in varying amounts on the November the 1st of each year 2014 through 2025. Bonds pledge full faith and credit of the city and provisions made for collecting of a tax to pave the principal of, and interest on the bonds subject to certain credits as provided in Section 8 of the ordinance, as required by KRS 83A-060, the following Section 7 of the ordinance is set forth in its entirety. Section 7, Obligation Bonds. The bonds shall be full general obligation of the city and for the payment of said bonds and the interest thereon, the full faith, credit, and revenue of the city are hereby pledged for the prompt payment thereof. During the period of the bonds are outstanding, there shall be, and thereby, and there hereby is levied on all taxable property in the city, in addition to all of the taxes without limitation as to rate a direct tax annuity annually in the amount sufficient to pay the principal of the interest on the bonds when and as due, it being hereby found and determined that current tax rates are within all applicable limitations. Said tax shall be and is hereby ordered computed, certified, levied, and extended upon the tax duplicate and collected by the same officers in the same manner at the same time that taxes for general purpose for each of the said years are certified, extended, and collected. Said tax shall be placed before and in preference of all of their items for the full amount thereof provided, however, in each year to the extent that the other lawfully available funds to the city are available for payment of bonds, including amounts available under the lease and are appropriated for such purpose. The amount of such direct tax upon all taxable property in the city shall be reduced by the amount of, amount of such other funds so available and appropriated."
Second.
In other words, it goes first.
Any questions for Commissioner Rhodes?
Ha ha.
That's fine.
City Clerk? Or is that an?
That's an inter.
Yeah, okay, we don't vote on any of these. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I'd be happy to read this next one. "I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of up to $10,500,000 industrial building revenue bonds, Series 2014, Paducah Convention Hotel LLC project of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the proceeds of which shall be used to pay the cost of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of an industrial building suitable for use as a hotel, together with all related and subordinate facilities necessary to the operation thereof, to be located within the City of Paducah, Kentucky, and leased to Paducah Convention Hotel LLC, providing for the pledge of revenues for the payment of such bonds, authorizing a lease agreement appropriate for the protection and disposition of such revenues, and to further secure such bonds, authorizing a bond purchase agreement, mortgage, payment in lieu of taxes agreement, and assignments, and authorizing other actions in connection with the issuance of such bonds. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance, the ordinance authorizes the issuance of industrial building revenue bonds, Series 2014, Paducah Convention Hotel LLC project, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $10,500,000 to finance the cost of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of a building suitable for use as a hotel, to be located within the City of Paducah, Kentucky, and to be leased to Paducah Convention Hotel LLC, the leasee. A Kentucky Limited Liability Company pursuant to an agreement of lease. The bonds are being issued under Chapter 103 of the Kentucky Revised Statute and are to be retired directly or indirectly from the lease payments to be paid by the leasee pursuant to the agreement. This ordinance also authorizes the execution on behalf of the city of the various..." also authorizes the execution on behalf of the city of the various financing documents involved in the transaction, including the agreement, the bond purchase agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, assignments, a mortgage and assignments, and substantially the forms submitted to the Board of Commissioners. A copy of the ordinance and of the form of the basic documents for such transit, transaction will be on file in the office of the City Clerk. The bonds are to be retired from the lease payments to be paid by the L.C. pursuant to the agreement and pursuant to Sections 103.200 to 103.285 of the Kentucky Revised Statutes. The bonds do not constitute an indebtedness of the City of Paducah, Kentucky within the meaning of the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
Need a second. And the best part is, um, the city's credit is not at risk?
Good evening, Mayor.
And the city is not responsible for repayment?
Unlike the previous general obligation that you just read where we pledged the full faith and credit, the industrial development bond works much differently. This is a private financing mechanism. The bonds won't be sold publicly. There'll be one private buyer. That will be Independence Bank will be, will be the sole buyer. But in this form of financing, we will continue to own the property and, and there will be a lease. We are taking this action in advance of, um, a, a public hearing in Frankfurt on Monday with the state local debt officer, who is the ultimate arbiter of the, the approval of the bonds. We are the issuer. The state actually approves that issuance, and, um, the city is not liable for the, for the repayment. It's strictly between the purchaser, which will be Independence Bank, and Paducah Convention Hotel LLC. And I have Glenn Malone, uh, principal with the hotel, and, and David Puckett, another principal, if you have any questions. After this introduction, I was explaining to the clerk earlier, I don't expect we'll see a second reading for, for some time. This is to, to demonstrate to the state local debt officer that this project is on track and we're, we're going forward with it. Um, but I think there will be a, a number of weeks involved before we actually come back for adoption. Be closer to the time they're ready for, for, um, close, bank closing on, on the bonds. Like one of the provisions says, I've obtained a permit with the city, um, you know, uh, prior to the issuance of the bond. So that's not, that's, um, in the pipeline, but that's not two weeks away, so.
Could you give us any projected dates? Anything that you can, if you can, I understand. Fall?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, certainly.
Soon?
Yeah, Mayor, Commissioner, certainly, certainly, um, this fall. Um, we're pushing hard, uh, on all the elements of the financing, uh, and this is one component of it. Um, we've got, uh, other items that are, uh, uh, we expect to deliver good news on soon, uh, but we don't have official, uh, word for you tonight.
Okay.
I will be in Frankfurt along with Steve Dillittle on this Thursday, and that's for the KDTA awards from the state. So, once I get that, then I'll let everyone know exactly what that amount is. Um, and from what I've been told, it's extremely good number. So we'll have that, then we'll have the hearing on, on Monday, uh, this coming Monday, and, um, we should start having some schematic drawings, uh, in our possession here in the next, um, 10 days.
Great. All good news?
Yeah.
Thank you. I get questions every day.
Unlike the city, David and I are pledging our full faith and credit.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You wear the commitment well. Okay, Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting matching grant funds through the Kentucky Division of Waste Management for a 2014-2015 household hazard waste grant for funding the annual city-county cleanup day, and authorizes the mayor to execute a grant agreement and inter-local agreement with McCracken County and all documents relating thereto. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby accepts matching grant funds in the amount of $26,800 through the Kentucky Division of Waste Management for a 2014-2015 hazardous, household hazardous waste grant to fund disposal services and, and educational outreach program for 2015 Annual City-City-County Cleanup Day, and authorizes the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all inter-local agreement with McCracken County and all documents relating thereto. A local match of $14,637.50 is required from the city and county, contributing $7,318.75 each through cash and/or in-kind contributions.
Second.
24th year. This is for next fiscal year, if you have any questions.
Good to have this here.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an engineering service agreement in the amount not to exceed $52,000 for professional engineering design services related to updating the utility and roadway plans for the Olivet Church Road Improvement Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor of the City of Paducah is hereby authorized to execute an engineering service agreement with Shawnee Professional Services in an amount not to exceed $52,000 for updating of the utility and roadway plans for the Olivet Church Road Improvement Project.
Second. Mayor Commission, I'll share with you that, uh, this firm is the original firm who designed, uh, the Olivet Church Road Project. They've recently been bought out by Shawnee, so now they're under the name Shawnee on that, and they're a downtown Paducah company. Uh, what we're doing is we're taking the plans and preparing them for bid. Uh, as you all are aware, that project's been, uh, been, I guess, on hold for a little while, and now we're moving forward with utility relocations. We will get those, uh, done in the near future, and then we'll prepare, uh, this to prepare the plans for actually the actual road construction.
Does it look like the original study was 2006 that they had done?
As far, yes, their original contract began in 2006. Yes, ma'am.
So we're having to spin this really because of all the delay in the project?
Partially, yes. To update, to update the plans, for example, the utilities need to be shown in their relocated position, uh, that's one thing. And then also to update the plans to bring them, I guess, more current, what, eight years after the fact.
Right. Thank you, Rick. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Nichols Electric Company LLC for the purchase of a new emergency generator to be installed at the fire station number one, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Nichols Electric LLC in the amount of $83,900 for the purchase of a new emergency generator to be installed in fire station number one, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for same.
Second.
Mayor Commission, this is just another one of the, I guess, upgrading of your facilities. Uh, the 2009 ice storm raised all of our awareness and attention that our, our facilities need to be, uh, fully functional during an emergency such as that. Uh, we've received a grant, uh, for this, uh, this fire station number one, uh, and, uh, we're, we're looking to get started on that, uh, very soon.
Okay. Thank you. City Managers, report.
Uh, with regard to Item 7F, the lease and revolving loan credit agreement with Genova Products, uh, it's our expectation that we will schedule a special meeting the first part of next week, likely Monday, uh, to bring forward the lease for your consideration. Then, um, the revolving loan credit agreement, uh, is going to be considered at a later date, my understanding as of today. Um, today there was a meeting of the City-County 911 Intergovernmental Board, um, of significance. Uh, today, the, uh, Board, uh, determined, heard a presentation from the Mayfield Post of the Kentucky State Police on the prospect of 911 services being offered to McCracken County and/or the City of Paducah through, uh, KSP. And, uh, as a follow-up to that, information is going to be furnished to KSP from both the city and the county, uh, that would enable the, the state, uh, police to, uh, give us some indication of what the cost for that might be. Obviously, there are a lot of considerations to that. Cost is one of them, but that's a very important one, so information will be gathered so that, uh, uh, we can get some idea of, of what the, the cost component of that might look like. Additionally, the 911 Board today, uh, heard a proposal by, Chief Barnhill, to, um, suggesting or offering, uh, Captain David White of the Police Department to, uh, serve a, a term in an interim director position with that board. Uh, the Board has been without a director for some time, and it would appear that, uh, it will continue to be that way for a period of time. Uh, Captain White possesses a lot of the qualities and attributes that collectively the Board, I think, feels are important to, uh, taking operations forward in terms of making some of the system improvements following analysis, creating, um, also, uh, a, uh, improved, uh, climate to recruit to. There was a recruitment process that took place a number of months ago now for the director that has run stale, so that needs to be, uh, redone. So the, the timeline for this interim gig, if you will, uh, is six months. Um, it could possibly be a little bit shorter than that. Uh, obviously, this is a matter that Chief Barnwell discussed with me at, at length before the proposal was made. Uh, I did not see a downside to it, saw a lot of merit to it. Uh, I strongly believe that, uh, with, uh, some of the analysis that was done of the 911 operation through the consultant, that there needs to be, um, attention and energy put to some of those items. So for the next period of time, I think this is a, a good way to, to go about that, and, and we happen to have a, a strong asset in Captain White to do that. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief Barnhill. Any Commissioner comments?
I have, I have one regarding, um, Paducah Power, and, um, it's, uh, so I brought, I brought my bill, just as a reference point. And, um, and I just want the, uh, the folks that were asking me about this, uh, how power cost adjustment, and what exactly that is, uh, why is it on there, and how long will it be on there? And, um, I'm an understanding that, that, and you correct me if I'm wrong, little, little City Manager, that power cost adjustment, there was a, there was a time, I don't know if Prairie State's on line now, or while they were down, had to get that energy from the market, open market, and that's what that, uh, power adjustment is. So the question was, okay, well, if Prairie States, uh, if they're online, then when will that disappear? When will this, uh, power adjustment disappear? If that's the reason that we incurred it, because they were offline and we had to go on open market to get it?
Yeah, uh, that's the primary reason for it. I think secondarily, um, there was a need to, um, replenish some cash reserves, well, quite frankly, were, were depleted in part because of having to go on the market. So, so you're correct in saying that. Uh, right now, um, two things I think that, that need to occur before that would go away. One would be that the, uh, uh, plant would need to function at, um, function efficiently for a period of time, start rolling forward at full efficiency. And secondly, the, the money that was, uh, spent in excessive budget or the reserves that were depleted because they had to go buy it on the market needs to be restored. So, uh, again, um, I don't want to, uh, be quoted with a specific date because there's nobody at Paducah Power that can say that. But action was taken last week to decrease that purchase cost adjustment by about 40% from what it is right now, and, uh, beginning with people's consumption in July. And it's, uh, hoped that, uh, we can follow up with, uh, another reduction to that, uh, in the next quarter. Um, go away completely, that's the hope. And, uh, if the Prairie State's facility, uh, reaches efficiency and continues going forward, then that certainly, uh, is expected to be able to happen.
And, um, Princeton is in with Paducah Power on this, and?
Princeton is, is our partner in Kentucky. There are a, a number of municipalities throughout the, uh, upper Midwest, if you will, that are part of the Prairie State operation. A lot of them in Ohio.
Having the same issues?
It's being experienced by everybody, yes, that are, uh, owners of Prairie State.
Explain just a little bit more. I mean, I know the city appoints the board members for Paducah Power. What, what else is, what else would be our relationship as far as the daily running of Paducah Power?
Really none. It's very independent, um, set up, uh, by state legislation. And, uh, again, Paducah Power is owned by, by the people of Paducah, but the, uh, operational and governance tenants of Paducah Power are outlined by state statute and, uh, at the local level, uh, other than the appointing authority to the Board. Um, now there's been a little bit more come about as a result of, um, Senate Bill 1 last year, the additional accountability for independent agencies. In other words, when there's a rate increase, now there needs to be a hearing before, uh, the City Commission. So Paducah Power is, is subject to some of that stuff that a number of other agencies are. But, uh, no, it's a independent board.
So they're run by that independent board and their independent management?
Yes.
We just simply make the appointments to the Board when they come open?
That's pretty much the size of it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
You bet.
I, I will just mention that there's a group of about 50 people going on a bus Thursday and Friday to Bowling Green to see some of the things that they have going on in their downtown area. Mayor, you're on the trip. Several people from the city are, uh, a small business incubator that they have, what they have going on with their TIF. Uh, from there, going to Elizabeth Town to look at their sportsplex, Owens Brett to look at their riverfront, and Mount Vernon, Indiana to look at a river port, very much similar to what ours could be. Not the river port downtown, but the river port out in West Paducah, that, uh, Paducah Economic Development. Owens is working to develop, so hope that we see some good things on that trip.
Okay, we have, uh, public comments, and we have, uh, Mr. Ronald C. Ward here tonight.
Well, thank you for letting me speak again. I was back here on March 11th about the Paducah Power problem. I'm glad you just brought that up. Okay. Oh, I think, Sandra Wilson, the last time I was here, I wanted to clarify something. You said rates were low. Well, rates are low for new industrial customers. Paducah Power is running a special where they get 5.2% per kilowatt. That's for new customers only. Existing customers, uh, pay even higher rates than residential. But then, I'll get to my point. Of course, they did lower the PCA a little bit. But like he mentioned, cash reserves, and I'm going to leave you covered there. I've got Fitch ratings here. They've had a cash reserve problem for years over there. And the reason for that is debt. Uh, I'm reading here from a Fitch bond report, including off balance sheet obligations, leverage has increased over 29,000 per customer, which is a function of owning generated sources theoretically offset reducing power purchases. High leverage will be a credit concern for some time. And then you just asked a question, PS, that is on retail rates, as it's no longer under the jurisdiction of TV or any regulatory entity. So my point is, I'm not going to take a lot of time, and they mentioned in the last newsletter on Paducah Power's side about debt service. Well, they owe, uh, Paducah Power bonds about 170 million. It says here, It says here, "On those bonds, debt service costs, which doubled to 2.6 million, will increase to 12, over 12 million annually by fiscal 2012 as additional debt to the system's peaking units begins to amortize." They owe about $170 million of Paducah Power bonds. Kentucky municipal power bonds between them and Princeton, which Paducah has 22,500 customers, Princeton has 4,500, so that's 27,000 total. So I'm assuming Paducah's part of that 470 million is about 83%. So all told, they owe, say 83% of that, that's around 400 million, then 168 million to Paducah, on Paducah Power's separate bonds. So, I mean, with that kind of debt service, they can say what they want. I don't see how rates are ever going to materialize, even though the Paducah Sun, you know, ran that article in the paper, we're still, even if it's lower, we're 35% higher than ever local municipality, except for Princeton Power, and they bought into it. And for example, like the article in the paper, where Henderson, which is a municipal utility, is only 8.5%. Murray's only 10, Mayfield's only 10. I mean, I think these rates are a combination of, um,
Debt?
Debt, debt mainly, that kind of debt having to service for decades. Into 2000, one of those KMPL bonds is 2037, the other one's 2042. I mean, that's eons away. And you're talking 29,000, that the people of Paducah, every customer's going to have to pay off that debt. The only source of income Paducah Power has is us. And it's just people of Paducah. And I have noticed, I've been some research, I mean, like the City of Paducah, they have to issue a financial report. I think you have Paducah Water down here, which is apparently well-run, I think they issue a financial report. I think under the Kentucky Open Records Act, someone should ask Paducah Power to release all of their records, all their financial statements relating to this Prairie State boondoggle. I don't know who has the authority to get that done, but it's my understanding it can get done over the Kentucky.
They're all public now. They're all public.
Where are they all public?
Anybody that wants them can have them.
Your financial statements?
Sure.
Can I come by there and get one?
You bet.
Okay.
You just call ahead to pick one up?
Yeah, or I can get you a set, whatever you, whatever.
Okay, I'll get that then.
Yeah. Oh, I tried to call you last week, but your number didn't get through for whatever reason.
Okay, I tried to call back, but.
Okay, we'll hook up.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we don't have an executive session tonight, so meetings adjourned.
No. I'll put them in order, I'll put them in order.